That's what I want to do. Okay, all right, so we will have a meeting tomorrow. Okay, let's go back.
So my question is, when he's going to that meeting, you know, they're talking about the changing the policy to, you know, on the transfer station.
It's a South Road.
Yeah, it's Chief Martin, Chief Martin, we go in there.
So Council of Congress questioned whether that fits the agreements that have been made, and so I'm wondering how as a council we feel about that. So it could have some positive effects.
Well, I think in the short term it has some really positive effects for us, for our community, but it's not going to be something that's going to happen really quick because I was the guy of policies that was making those changes, that was writing policy changes, and they weren't done by the time I left, and so it's going to have a little bit of delay because that whole committee's going to have to be reconstituted at this point. So it's not a change that you're going to see happen by January 1st, that's for sure. But that is one of the issues that has to be addressed there, whether those policy changes fit in with the agreements that we've signed, that everybody signed.
Okay, well, there is one.
That's what I'll keep an eye on. And then as you go into...
I just received their agenda yesterday. And it's a short agenda, I guess, correct?
Yeah, very short.
Because it's just before their Christmas party, so like it's going to be a 20-minute, they're not going to get into this for this meeting, it won't even happen until January 1st.
And then they're having the party that same night?
Yes.
Yes, they always do.
Always get that party. I was just thinking that, you know, if we own it, we fix it, and we also need to have, you know, the town needs to have control over the, over the, over the transfer stations.
We do.
Well, I don't know if we do totally, don't we have policies that are dictated by...
No, we haven't. Not very many.
Okay, well, that's something you might want to really give up. Counselor, do you have a book or a binder? Did you give it to them?
Yeah, no, I haven't given it to them.
Maybe you want to make sure that Counselor P. Roy has a binder. Yeah, all right, so they're handy bus, you didn't have a meeting? Or what happened there?
No, we have not had a meeting to date. Mike's been difficult to pin down for a time to get together for a meeting. We need to have one because we have some issues that need to be addressed.
Can you see that that happens sooner than later?
Working on it.
Thank you. History of Society, Counselor Banbury.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay, good. Inter-Municipal Nothing, Library is tomorrow?
No, it was last night.
Last night. So you want to give us a report for next?
They submitted their budget to HACAN lobby today, did they?
Not sure.
For the requisition?
Yeah.
And what does it look like?
Well, they've had to increase it a little bit because of the increase in wages for minimum wage, so it works out to about 7%.
For the requisition? Requisition increase is 7%?
7%. Because of the $15, $15 minimum wage?
It's only 11.
No, it's...
It's 11.
11 and 12, 60 by the end of the year.
About 12, 60, about the end of...
By the end of 2016, I can't know what the dates are.
So that's 7%. Wow, that's steep.
I'll look to tomorrow.
Yeah.
That is, that is very steep. Is there nowhere where they can scrounge and cut and...
Well, the one thing they want to do too is they want to start building up funds for expenses that come up, like right now, they don't have any funds to cover those expenses, and if that kind breaks down, they take it in and...
They don't have...
There is, there's no reserve to pay for things like that, so they would like to take about $2,000 and keep it for themselves.
That's reflected in this new budget? That increase?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
I think it's about $12,000 a year.
That's a 7% increase total requisition from us here.
Wow, that's significant.
I would think that is...
But most of it was wages before anyway, so a 10% increase in wages is, you know, it only hit us as 7%, so.
So I remember last year when we were discussing that, and Counselor Barnes went back to the...
No, that was two years ago.
Was that two years ago?
Yeah. Last year there was an increase, but it went, we passed it.
Yeah, due very minimal.
Pardon me?
It was very minimal.
No, it was 10,000 or 12,000 bucks. They basically went by what the percentage of the town is offering.
Offering?
For our employee contract. Good job, 7%.
I just feel a bit confused, but anyway, I'd like to see that photo. Okay, 11:12, did you have a meeting or not?
Actually, you know, just sorry, while we're still talking about that 7%, it'd be interesting, and I don't know how we can track us in this valley, but it would be interesting to see how our requisition amounts and therefore, you know, potentially our tax rule has been affected by, you know, decisions that have been made by higher levels of government that have had nothing to do with us. So, I mean, ultimately, we have a 3% increase, and we say, hey, you know, 90% of that was just in response to this new initiative at the provincial level or something, you know. Anyway, I don't know, that's probably just split hairs, but again, you can see how that trickled down, right? Now it's trickling into them, that's trickling back over us. We're going to have to possibly see that show up in municipal taxes.
Edward? Okay, Parks and Recs, you had a meeting, a report there by Counselor Barnes, and Counselor Barnes, I was asking you about those rates that had been approved, and you need to have, bring your resolution to the table for us to...
Next, thank you for the... For the next meeting, yeah. That, that rate was, remember we went back, we talked...
Yeah, we, we asked...
We asked them to negotiate, they went back to the, they went back to the swim club, and that was the rate that they negotiated, so brought it down considering what they were going to charge.
But I see that it is only until the end of this June 2016, so it's very limited in time. Is the process redone?
Well, it's, it's, no, it's just, no, that's, that's, they only go to the end of June with this one.
But that requisition, that change of rate?
That's just for, that's just for this year.
Okay, so it was not clear in my mind. Okay, all right, so those are all the reports, thank you so much.
One question on the air, we were talking about South Road, the broadband, yeah, you guys were working on a broadband resolution to...
AUMA, we already passed it, it was passed, a very large, large amount, if you remember. It was presented, it was presented by the Town of Raymond.
Yeah, no, I, okay, so I'm talking about this new one, the MDT.
Oh, the Town of Tiber?
Yeah, what's that? I was just curious.
Okay, the Town of Tiber came with a resolution, but the wording of it was not specially clear for resolution, and they wanted the Mayor's Board as an organization to approve it, but it really was not something that, at that point, we could give support to the way it was formulated. They needed some improvement. So we have put it back into their hands to come back with a revised version of it.
Gotcha. And that's, were they planning to present that next year or something?
They're supposed to present it in December, we hope.
To who?
To Mayor's Board.
Oh, just for approval, for Mayor's Board, okay.
Right. And then we will bring it back to our diverse community for approval too. If the towns want to show the support to whatever they're offering, then we will write a letter of support if that is what Council wants.
Right. I was just curious, it might come up in my broadband meeting tomorrow, so.
I could maybe do something for you and send you that resolution.
If you could, yeah, if you could, thank you.
It was, yeah, it was a little problematic for us.
On the Mayor's and Board's report, what are you grant Hunter-Meades' presentation about? Is this a correct number that it's 47 million? It can't be, I don't know if that's the rate number.
That's what they gave us.
0.7.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, 47 billion is more than what the actual budget is, 41.5.
Sometimes numbers are thrown around, sometimes numbers are thrown around, and there could be a mistake.
That, that was...
Because my point of view is probably more like 4.7.
Well, that's, my guess would be a little close. I don't know how you could possibly spend that much money in one year, because there's not the, there's not the equipment, the manpower to do it.
One, that number, and then two, that the opposition supported those measures.
You know something? What I will do, I will send a query to the secretary there.
Thank you.
And ask her to kind of confirm this figure with them.
Thank you.
And good for you for catching it.
Right, but a little further down, it's mentioned where you, and thank you for doing this, you asked the MLA about the AHS initiatives and potentially the project for hospital, and then they said that that could be seen at a website? Did you ever find, like, a list of projects?
Yeah, I found a list of projects, we not listed.
Not listed, that's what I realized.
Maybe if you want a little update on that, we went with Fred Lacy to see Sean Shilton in Ledbridge, AHS coordinated for the South Region, and we asked him a little bit what, what's going on and how did we get so derailed? And his was really, actually, Ledbridge got $25 million to do their project, and of course, then our business case and all that has been...
They borrowed all our numbers, so Ledbridge took all our money, is what he said.
Well, you know, it's not all our money, because honestly, a business case about $75,000, but if you don't have it, then you don't have it, right? So that will have to wait a little. And Fred Lacy had a chance to speak with Minister Hugman at AMDNC, and they received a letter that I had sent, were quite aware of our situation. Their question to Fred and Counselor Curly was, so what are you going, what do you see as your new hospital? But he had the sense it was more like, what are you going to bring? What's a plan you have? And I thought, they were supposed to build us a business case, and they were supposed to have the plan, because we developed the needs assessment as a town. So I spoke with Jeff, there's a few venues of things we're going to try to explore, and once we have a little bit, a better sense, we'll kind of keep you abreast.
Mayor, is that a case of a change in the policy, the way they're doing things? Or a case of a minister not being experienced in what the process is yet?
No. I think, I think she's quite aware that we should have had some attention, but I think as a government, they decided that, and the big centers were going to get the money for infrastructure at this point. Our hospital in our town would cost anywhere between $150 million and $200 million. So there are big centers that are heavily populated and are in great need of even more money than that. So there is only so much money and so much debt and...
Apparently not. $47 billion.
So what I, what I asked is, in our letter, we asked, what, how do they intend to keep our hospital functioning and maintained? And I also asked in that same letter, when do they intend to have a business case ready for us? And so it's in our court and our demands.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, anything else? If not, we have the correspondence, a committee report, the peace officer, the project reports, you saw the project report, some, some analysts that are not totally completely, but you can see we're moving along pretty good. The peace officer report is there for your information. The strategic plan update is there, we're going to deal with that in January. Question, Counselor Banbury, under 11, you had a question for Jeff?
Yes, can you give us an update on what's happening with our, with our pool, the water slides, and also with the budget accordingly to that water slide?
So, nothing changed on the budget. You remember, I want to say, two months ago, we had a motion to move some money out of reserves to pay for all that, no change there, that should all be fine. The, the big thing we're up against right now is getting that, getting that slide constructed with now the weather set in, so a little better than half the concrete's done, I think. And it may, the problem we've got is the Rotary Club's grant, we had an extension till the end of December to have the project complete. And unless it gets milled here, and it might, it might get mild enough, the contractor's still game to come down and put it up. So not on a day like today, but wouldn't be too keen on that, but if we can just get all the cement work done, and the cement contractors, whenever they can hoard it in and it's mild enough, they'll do that work too, but we've probably got four or five days of real cold weather here before we start seeing some zeros and 1 degrees again. I think at the end of the day, we'll be fine, I think the province will give us enough. Everything's on site, we've expended a good chunk of the money, I think we'll be just fine, we're just going to have to apply for potentially another extension.
Now, the cement work is being done by local company?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had some local guys doing that. We ran into a few issues with drains and piping and a few things that didn't go as smooth as we wanted, but it's all sorted now, and we're going, but there's still some more cement work that needs to be done before the slide can be totally installed.
Okay.
I've had a couple of people ask questions about funding and where the money came from, for what, for part of it and stuff. I'm wondering if there's the possibility, maybe, of us putting something on the website, breaking everything down of where the funding actually ended up coming from.
Sure, yeah, I mean, your bulk, as you know, was reserved.
Yeah.
The town was 20,000 a year for 30 years or something, so we had about $600,000 cash there, right?
And a mic.
But yeah, we've got, we've had contributions now from the Kinsmen, the now defunct Kinsmen, unfortunately, and then the Rotary and...
Private donors.
Yeah, we've had a few donors, so yeah, we could definitely, it wouldn't be hard to put a little breakdown of total expenses to date where they came from. Yeah.
All right.
There's some MSI in there too, but, all right, I'll look at that.
Excellent.
Well, and maybe, maybe it would be a good opportunity to outline the next phase as well in there, just as a public statement saying, hey, is what we're looking at doing next year or whatever.
Okay, sounds like a deal. 12 correspondence, that is something that we need to take a little bit of, a few minutes Mrs. Henderson has some, some concerns, and they're fair concerns. Their concerns are with trailers that are parked on the streets, sometimes buses and...
Can you maybe quantify or specify what we're talking about when we're talking about trailers here? It's a fifth wheel haul.
Yeah, I, I know what it is, so I just want to make sure everybody else knows.
It's a fifth wheel, yeah.
But it's hooked onto a vehicle, and it's licensed, and it's insured.
Yeah. So according to our policy presently, it is according to the policy. It is moved every couple weeks, 10 centimeters, brought back to the same place, but it is according to policy. The question is, is that policy appropriate? Especially in a, in a street like hers that is fairly narrow, that is used by bus, that needs to be cleared when the snow is there? Could it pose actually a security risk? And I would suggest it might. Counselor Banbury?
Mayor, this discussion come up yesterday afternoon with myself and our administrator, our CAO, and this is basically Lloyd have dealt with it, and I understand that this unit will not be left there for very much longer, it will be moved out to a, his father's residence or something like that.
So just, just out of curiosity here, because by policy, there's nothing that our bylaw officer could do.
But policy is correct.
No. So this is just a conversation where it was suggested and corrections were made without needing to have a policy change?
Neighborly requests, sir, would you?
What, what we need to look at, does council want to review that policy?
If I may, we recently had a fantastic update about the snow policy on, I think, our website and whatnot, I read through that, and for the first time, I noticed in our policy currently, our snow removal policy, it says, of course, you cannot shovel your driveway, driveway snow out onto the road, and we would prefer that your cars be moved, but if you do leave your car, and help me, this is, I guess, is a question for administration, maybe see if I'm interpreting this right, if you, if you don't move your car, the plow will go around it, and then the wording said, and the removal of that snow will be your responsibility. Now, I'm guessing we phrased it that way, just saying, we as a town aren't going to be liable to go out there again later and move that snow, that's, that's your problem now. But what I wanted to clarify is, it's not that the expectation is that they now need to shovel that whole, I mean, you know, to be fairly deep on the road, all the way around their whole vehicle, and, and so, I mean, because if that's the interpretation, we could ask that of this person. We could say, hey, it's your responsibility to move down all that snow off of there, and that whole big swoop. That's how I read it. So as soon as I saw this, I immediately thought of that, and I thought, you know, we do have a little bit of muscle in that bylaw to, for this kind of thing.
But I mean, her point of view of having bus, school bus going there in a very narrow area that is now restricted, and maybe I see, are we putting kids at risk? Unnecessarily putting them at risk.
That's a, that's a deeper slide to cross, because there's a lot of places thrown down.
But it's crazy, but it's, it's something we need to think about, because security is our, is our duty.
So two things I, to say and then ask. One is, yes, that's how the bylaw's written, since I've been here, it's been our practice that we've always tried to make sure we don't pin anybody in. I mean, if we got one that doesn't move all winter, it's probably going to get pinned in. But we've also, sometimes when they plow, we'll get calls from somebody that says, hey, they left a big trail on my driveway or in front of my vehicle, our guys will run over and, they run over and scoop it out of the way quick as best they can, so I suppose that the one reason why we don't necessarily just tell everybody, sorry for your lock, shovel it out, is we don't put notice on the streets to have your vehicles going, because we never know exactly where we're going to be, exactly when we're going to be. We tried it for a while, and people were more upset that we asked them to remove their cars and they didn't get there than it was that if we just wondered about what was on the street. With Mrs. Henderson, her street has, it's a great example, if you go up there and look, there's an acute issue on that street of off-street parking. You have a number of residents on that street who own six, seven, eight vehicles, so there's two in the driveway, and the whole street's taken up with off-street, which again, technically isn't illegal, they're registered and insured, but you also have a number of bus drivers on that street, so they park their buses across the street in front of the neighbors or down the street in front of the neighbors. And so as much as we have super wide streets in town, that street becomes...
Very narrow.
Quite narrow. And I asked Lloyd just to get a bit of a feel for this regionally, and he has a network of his other bylaw officers. It's not unusual to prohibit buses, for example, in residential areas, parking there, not driving there, but parking there. So that's not an unusual thing, if you look at a number of communities, you can't park a school bus in the residential area, simple as that. They got to be provided for.
That's off-street.
I suppose if it's off-street, that might be...
My daughter drives a school bus.
Yeah.
She parks on her driveway.
Yeah.
They told her that she couldn't park on the street, but as long as she's off the street, she's okay.
So we have a number of school buses all over the town that park there all the time. Most of the West Wind buses park on Main Street at the bus barn up there, they have a place to go, but all the Blood Tribe buses, they're owned or they're contracted, and they are parked all over residentially through the town. And Mrs. Henderson's street is an acute example of off-street parking issues. We don't have them in most other places in town, it is really, because of a couple of homes there that have a ton of vehicles that never move, it's an example of, of an interesting issue. And there, there are residents in there that drive buses and have horse trailers and have RVs and have a number of vehicles, so I, why, I had it in correspondence, but I told the mayor, I wouldn't mind if council wants to look at any part of that bylaw, if we want to look at it in different... I'm not suggesting it has to be, I mean, we've, we've dealt with it as it is for a long time, but, you know, you can't, there are certain things like school buses that it is fairly common outside of Carson, you can't park them in residential area. Whether we want to look at that, I'll leave, I'll leave to you.
Mayor, do we have any town-owned lots that are just east of that area where we could designate that as in school, while the school is in, in, not during the summertime, seasonal work? Yeah, that, the buses could be in that area.
Well, you know, if you remember, we have a lot that is behind the road back.
Yeah, but now these, these people live up on that east hill.
But we have some...
That's why they're using that spot.
We have some on the east hill too.
But is there, is there, is there, is there an area up on that east hill that we could designate as a school bus parking area?
Do we then need to have to clear that area out? Because you get enough snow into those places, and you're going to stuck some school buses there. That's why they like to park on the street, and they don't have to worry about pulling them out.
I, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, the problem is, is we've had a neighbor that drove bus every year.
Exactly.
So now do we have to find spots in every quadrant of town for bus parking? That would be my concern, right? Where many municipalities say you can't park them, you can't park them in residential areas. So we did talk to the school division, and to, Lloyd talked to the school division, I should say, and they said, our bus drivers can drive their vehicles up to the storage yard, get their bus, run their route, take the bus back, drive their vehicle home. They didn't, they weren't object, they didn't object to no buses in residential areas. Again, we hadn't had thorough conversation with them, just asking in theory if they had provision. Where, what I see you doing is, it's every Blood Tribe bus in Carson parks in front of the residents, because they're either owned by that resident or contracted to be driven by that resident.
Yeah.
The Blood Tribe bus system used to have the bus barn out here, and I don't know, I couldn't tell you the whole backstory, but at the end of the day, they don't anymore, so there's no buses there. So it's, it's tricky, but like I said, I, I totally empathize with Mrs. Henderson. Her street is an acute example of off-street parking issues, more than any other in town that I can think of by a long shot.
But, but there's a number of other streets that very easily become that. The street in front of my house, when I had that truck in front of there, that road suddenly is not very wide.
Right.
Don't be messing around with the camera.
That is true, that is true, that's why, okay, all right, so here, help me a little bit. Do you feel that we should look at our policy and see if we can improve that policy regarding trailers and buses?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think, I think we should take a look at it, if, if we have to tweak that policy to get the buses off the street, I guess so be it. That would solve a lot of other problems with a lot of other vehicles.
I think it would, anyways.
Trails and buses, or whatever. Okay, so we give that to administration to do, will that be fair enough?
Well, I'm almost thinking this is, it feels like a kind of a one-off complaint, that we could deal with the specific issue.
We've had two other ones on that same street.
On other streets, it's quite a...
Specific to trailers, is that our...
Trailers, RVs, trucks.
Yeah, no, that is quite appropriate.
Wheels with their extensions out.
Yeah.
Which are very dangerous, you should get to it.
Maybe let's, let's have that revision and...
I think we're well having the discussion.
Okay.
There, there's a lot of issues to discuss there, but...
Right.
I just, personally, I'll just share my thoughts, I'm a little hesitant, because we are, you know, a fairly rural town, you know, we're not Ledbridge or Calgary, so, you know, and we do have wide, wide streets, so I don't want to...
We have, we have some wide...
We have some very narrow streets, right?
But we have some narrow ones. If you go see, if you go through that one, once you see they're parking all alone on a corner, there's a fairly sharp corner there, you're going to be surprised how narrow it is. Okay, we'll leave it at that. So we are coming at the end of the regular meeting. So we are coming at the end of the regular meeting and we need to go in camera.
I can move that we, or go, move into the in camera.
And this is for CEO review. All right, all in favor? Thank you.